Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Here.
Councilmember Emech.
Here.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Corio.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Thank you very much. We have a form. We're going to start with public comment. I understand, Madam Clerk, we've got quite a few public comments either to be, to address the council or to who have emailed.
That is correct. We will start with Dee Urban. Dee, are you there?
Hi, I am here. Thank you, Leslie.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, hello. My name is Dee Urban and I live here in West Side. Ward 6 is where I live, it's where I work, it's where I play, it's my community. To be really honest with you, I was very hesitant to even attempt to call and speak to you at this very important meeting. And honestly, the reason I hesitated is I don't want to become the next victim of violence, the next victim of boycotting, the next victim of bullying or terror tactics. Yet here I am lending you my voice of encouragement because there are hundreds of others like myself that are literally begging you, our council representatives, to do something about the inappropriate behaviors of Jen Corio. Yes, we really need a code of conduct. Yes, we need action steps to ensure the safety of our residents, the safety of our community against terrorist actions, unjustified demands, threats of intimidation. But the very people that have convinced me to make this call to you tonight are asking you, council, to take even another step forward. Please also reach out to state representatives and ask them to put legislation in place to empower the people to remove someone that fails to represent people, that fails to keep their promises, fails to actually honor justice for all, and to do something about someone that resorts to bullying, threats, and demeaning of our rights to live life in this place we call home. Truly, I thank you tonight so much for taking action and establishing once and for all that our city will not tolerate being threatened, boycotted, bullied, into becoming an unwelcoming place. Thank you so much and keep up the good work.
Sorry about that, guys. I was on mute. Next up, we have Don Carlson.
Don, are you there? Don, are you there?
Don, if you press star 6, that will unmute you.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Don Carlson. I'm a resident of Ward 4. I'm speaking tonight about freedom of speech and what I think is this harmful discussion of restricting political protected speech that some of you don't like. This council simply does not have the right to limit speech outside of your own meetings and official business. Governmental bodies often have formal and informal guidelines on the conduct of elected officials and others within the course of their own deliberations and meetings. An example of this is eliminating my own speech tonight to three minutes. But these guidelines are limited to actual discourse while conducting your official business. This council cannot restrict my own comments when I'm not participating in your formal meetings. This is not a privilege that you extend to me or your fellow alderpersons. It's our individual and collective right as Americans. Each of you have the right to speak your mind outside of your official meetings. You do not give up this right simply because you've been elected, and that right extends to Jennifer Corio as well. And as elected officials, the test of governing free speech is not when you agree with the rhetoric, but explicitly when you don't. This council has authority to regulate your own official deliberations, but you do not have the right to be authoritarians outside of it. There's a difference, and you're getting dangerously close to that bright line if indeed you haven't crossed it already. In conclusion, I wonder what President, give 'em hell, Harry Truman would say about this discussion tonight. Thank you very much.
Oh, there we go. Next, Madam Clerk.
Next up, we will have Kimberly Tyson.
Ms. Tyson? Go ahead.
Hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. My name is Kim Rosie Tyson. I am a resident of Ward 1. First, I want to say that this meeting is a waste of everyone's time. Furthermore, directing staff to create a code of conduct would be a giant waste of everyone's time and the city's resources that could be put to much better use. I think it is a very disappointing first step by the mayor-elect. It makes me nervous for what will be considered serious issues in the future. Since I believe most people have only read the headlines and not the full post this meeting is in regards to, I'm going to take the time and read it in its entirety and would implore you to actually listen to the words that she said. Striving for unity sounds nice, but it's often just code for acquiescing to a status quo that benefits the powerful but excludes many in our community, actively harms people on the margins. In 2019, I was elected based on my commitment to fight relentlessly and without apology for these folks. I have done that for the past two years and I plan to continue. Montney and Becker ran campaigns that employed fearmongering, deception, and intentional misinformation of voters sponsored by big business and the police union. That says a lot about who they are and how they will show up to council. Perhaps we will find common ground on some issues, but I have no intention of building unity with them around their authoritarian, regressive beliefs. Instead, I will proudly honor the people who would suffer under these policies by making it as difficult for them as possible to freeze these retrograde values into policy in our city. I'm much more committed to being on the right side of justice than I am to respectability or congeniality. Now, this is Kim's voice again. I cannot begin to understand the stress of facing a nonstop onslaught of abuse from racist online, constant threats against her life, her and her family's, entire websites and blogs dedicated to sharing hate and vitriol against her fueled by fellow council members with fake aliases. We see you. In addition, within the council itself, she is constantly interrupted, spoke down to, and in general, given very little respect from certain other council members. Mboka, by your definition, your lack of inaction in those instances is tantamount to tacit approval. That is what you gave as a reasoning for this special meeting. I sincerely believe in finding the root cause and fixing that issue as opposed to slapping a Band-Aid on a symptom and moving on. This did not start with Jen's post on election night. That's what I'm going to stop. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Scott Steinling. He is live here at City Hall.
Scott Steinling, I am extremely disappointed in Alderman Corio that this city has basically, she swore an oath, if you recall correctly, that she would uphold the constitution of the state of Illinois and represent the people of this city. She is appalled to think that she's representing the city. I suggest she take a look at herself and see whether or not, if the shoe fits, wear it. But don't go tearing other people down. And she is a disgrace to the city. She should be removed immediately, if not sooner. And I don't think really that she is basically representing the people of that ward. I think she's representing her own values. Ship her back to where she came from. I'm embarrassed that, and I'm even not even from her ward, I'm embarrassed that she is a member of the city council of the city of Bloomington. Thank you very much, and you have a good night.
Next, Madam Clerk. And I do want to remind everybody, you do not have, if you're going to make comments that borderlines on xenophobia, you do not have that right as you're making. I think Mr. Steinling was ridiculously close to that. Madam Clerk.
Next up, we have Zach Carlson.
Hey there. Can we all hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I just want to start, but we just heard the issue that we have, and we do nothing about this? We do nothing? I was going to start, I had this whole thing planned out, and we'll get to it. But what, this is what we're dealing with. And I see you, Donna, I see you, Mboka, Joni, Kim. You do nothing, nothing. You sit there, you smug, you smirk, and this is it? This is what we deal with. This is what this has come to. This isn't about, you know, whatever niceties there are, right? But like, while we're here, like, last time I checked, there was never a call or a need to create some sort of code of conduct in this recent history of the city. And we've done fine with that one for 190 years. Further, it's telling that the majority of the council is open arms by a young woman who happens to speak her mind. Let's not even get into the conversation on the sexist use of unbecoming. I don't ever recall a request for a code of conduct when Mayor Renner spoke inappropriately, as you would term it. And Terry, anything about you? Sorry. What makes it so different now? Really, what makes it so different now? Julie and Jeff, I mean, thank you for not signing on to this waste of time. It is honestly a waste of time. Mboka, in all the time on the council, you've kicked the can down the road, refusing to take a stance on anything. This is the first I've seen you do something. It speaks volumes, especially as an incoming mayor. The first and last thing you do on council is attempt to silence another. It's going to be a long four years if you keep this up, and we'll show where your priorities lie. To Joni, Donna, and Kim, thankfully true, you will not have to be heard from again anyway. More to the point, I don't recall any collective outrage when Joni had to interject Indigenous people practice cannibalism because, quote, "The truth really needs to get out there, the whole truth." If you've done your research and contextualized your findings, you'd find it's a role as a racist trope used to excuse heinous crimes on Indigenous people. As the fair quote mine goes, no investigation, no right to speak. It's plain racism, and you don't need a hood to practice it either. Wouldn't that call for condemnation, for censorship, or is it because of someone else you don't like speaking out that you feel threatened to waste our time like this? Leave history to the historians, and don't forget to close the door on your way out. Molly and Jamie, honestly, I'm just disappointed you had to co-sign this and agree to doing something like this. Please do better moving forward. I expect more. We have far more pressing issues in the city. We have people that are going to be facing evictions. We have infrastructure that needs work. We have police who provide their oversight. We have landlords that abandon their properties to decay. Please stop wasting our time on frivolous things like this and do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next. You're muted.
All right. Next up, we have Trevin Gaffney.
Trevin Gaffney, can you hear us? Go ahead.
Trevin, you may need to click star 6 to unmute yourself.
Trevin, we're going to need you to unmute yourself or we're going to have to move on.
The star 6.
Yeah, star 6. Is he online?
He is online. We could move on momentarily.
Let's go ahead and move on because we've got only 17 minutes left.
Yep. Let's go to Kelly Tyson.
Kelly? Kelly, you'll need to unmute yourself, star 6. Kelly, we can't hear you.
All right.
Okay, we're going to, oh, Kelly, there you are.
There you go.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Hi, my name is Kelly Tyson, and I'm a resident of Bloomington. Today, I will be addressing the special meeting in regards to Councilmember Corio. As a Latina and queer person, she brings a unique and invaluable perspective to the table that other council members simply cannot. I think it would be more than regrettable to stifle that voice in honestly any city council discourse. I have seen Councilmember Corio out in the community engaging with so many people, Black, Indigenous, people of color, young people. She's been a consistently fierce supporter, advocating for them, actively listening to them, encouraging them to pay attention and get involved, to make their voices heard, and to emerge as leaders. And for those council members who fall painfully short in that arena, this is where Councilmember Corio shines. It's one of her strongest attributes and one of the many reasons I admire her leadership. She will always make the choice to unapologetically stand up for people, especially the marginalized and underrepresented. Now, with Councilmember Corio's staunch advocacy in mind, I think now would be an appropriate time to reflect on the many instances where she endured outwardly racist accusations, threats, and general mistreatment, some of which were very public, some of which happened right here during city council meetings. I'd also like for you to reflect on how you responded to that, council members, because from where I stand, I've only seen one or two of you have the courage or decency to speak up against it. If the goal here truly is to set a community example, I think inaction and silence in response to hatred, violence, and racism are far greater offenses than anything City Councilmember Corio has better done. As far as the comment made by Councilmember Corio regarding Becker and Montney and the police union, yes, they absolutely got bought out by receiving a combined total of over $25,000 in campaign contributions from police interest groups. As the city council governs over the police, that is absolutely problematic. It does not look good. Large donations and big money should have no place in a democracy, especially when city council is the governing body capable of passing regulations or processes to hold police accountable and ensure transparency. Councilmember Corio called it as she saw it, and it's true and fact-checked. Councilmember Corio does seem outraged, and I'm outraged as well, and it seems rather shortsighted and petty to patrol the language of council members when there are far greater uses of your, my, and other local taxpayers' time and resources. And just to expound upon my frustration with this, these council meetings are public, and I've watched several. And from city council members other than Councilmember Corio, I've witnessed some very childish, passive aggression, unwillingness, stubbornness to discuss or explore issues, exaggerated nitpickyness, or choosing to be difficult to work with on issues they're not interested in.
Mayor, you're muted.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk.
Next up, we will go back to Trevin Gaffney. If you can press star 6.
Trevin? Mr. Gaffney? Okay. We'll have to move on, Madam Clerk.
Let's see, we can go to Paula Leifel.
Paula, are you there? Paula, you need to press star 6 because you're muted.
Okay.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Plug in. Okay. All right. Paula Leifel, I live in Ward 5. I was born Normal, but I've lived in Bloomington since 1974. I certainly respect alderperson Jen Corio's right to a personal opinion about anything and everyone, anyone. However, I was appalled at her lack of a filter when she publicly expressed her opinion of the newly elected alderperson. Any person who's participating in a public forum should keep a civil tongue in his or her head. All my close friends know I can swear like a sailor, but I'm not going to do that here, as I'd sure like to. Comments from my friends in the community lead me to believe that Ms. Corio loves all this negative attention. And if she's rebuked by the council, possibly she will not retreat. In my opinion, she is a spoiled brat who will just pitch a fit when someone tells her no. And I would encourage her to grow up into an adult with the presence of mind to learn civility and how to compromise. And I believe, as does my husband, that she is a disgrace to representative government in our city. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, Madam Clerk.
Next up, we will go, let's see, ready, called Kimberly Tyson, you've already spoke. We can go to Janay Clark.
Janay Clark? Ms. Clark?
Hello?
Yeah, this is Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Okay, you have three minutes. So address the council.
Okay. I am a resident of Ward 6, and I just wanted to say that I look forward to Jen making the lives of Becker and Montney's time on the council an uncomfortable hell that they're not accustomed to. It shouldn't be easy for two candidates who were sponsored by big business and the police union to dictate policies for the real people Jen represents. We expect her to continue to fight unapologetically for us because we know who these two will fight for. This action isn't just an attempt to silence Jen Corio, it is an attempt to silence the people she represents and reflects very poorly on our city to have our new mayor elect that primarily took the wealthiest wards and the right-wing vote to silence the representative for the poorest and the least powerful economically that are the people in Ward 6. There's a side to choose here, and while two of them are leaving, there's no hope for Bray, Painter, or Boling because look at how they voted on the water action shut-off. For the rest of us, though, we are watching, and every decision you make reflects on whose side you really are on. Also, I would like to say that I definitely agree with Don and Kim and Zach, and lots of love to Jen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk.
Leslie, I think Paula is still unmuted.
I was just, yeah, I was just trying to mute. I'm having an issue today. I can't, I don't have my regular features, so I apologize to the group. Okay, so next up, we can, this would be our last one, I believe, unless there's an extension, and we would jump over to Leah Penson.
Ms. Penson? You need to press star 6. You're muted. Leah Penson, you're muted. If you don't unmute yourself, we're going to need to move on. Hello, are you there?
There she is.
I think, I think you're unmuted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Hi, sorry about that. All right, so to reiterate what quite a few folks have said, and to take the time and taxpayer money to hold a formal meeting just to tell Jen you don't like what she said on Facebook, again, it's not only disappointing, it's privileged. We are living in unprecedented times right now, and I promise you, there are more important things to discuss than one of your council members' Facebook comments, especially when that same council member has been the target of harassment since before she was even elected, and hardly any of you have ever even once stuck up for her. Yeah, maybe Jen is angry, but so am I, and so are her constituents, so are millions of people. There are Black people dying every day at the hands of the people who swore to serve and protect them. Listen to some of these comments and the fearmongering that is so prevalent in our community is honestly sad. It is a sign of privilege and ignorance of the reality of so many folks who truly do experience violence and harassment on a daily basis. Julie Emech, I am proud of you as my alderwoman for not partaking in the signing of this petition, and Jen, I am proud of you for never backing down on what is right. You know you're on the right side when people call in and say things like ship her back to where she came from. It's disgusting, and none of you ever stick up for her except for her close friends on this council. We are living in a pandemic. Scientists are battling fake information to try to encourage folks to get vaccinated so we can return to some sense of normalcy. There are people in our community who are impoverished, who are going hungry, who are experiencing homelessness. I mean, I could go on and on and on. There is so much more for this council to do than take the time to formally meet, to tell Jen her comments were shitty. Molly, I'm so disappointed in you. I had such high hopes for you as a council member. I have heard you call yourself an ally, and yet your first act as council member-elect is to partake in censuring the only woman of color on the council. Being an ally goes far beyond policies, training, and words, Molly. And I guess to sum it up, just please oppose the creation of a code of conduct. Stop wasting everybody's time and get to pertinent critical matters. Your constituents would love to see it. And Jen, I look forward to watching you give Becker and Montney hell for the next two years. Thanks.
I was going to say, we have time, I think, for, I was going to say, two more. We should finish at 46. So if I can go really quickly.
We do have time, just took, I was muted. We do have time for two more.
With that said, we actually have, everyone who is currently online has already spoken this evening.
Would you announce them, the names of those who communicated via email?
I will. I also was going to read, so we have Criscle Abel, Alora Swick, Zach Gettrich, and Trevin Gaffney that I don't see present in the meeting currently, and then emailed Serena Fish, Amanda Andres, Carrie Handy, Stephen Sees, Tori Morey, Jordan Baker, Gary Irs, Christina Spivvy, Paula Leifel, Brenda Tallin, Kristen Snow, and Karen Bays, who emailed a public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to the, if I can get my glasses here, the agenda item, and I will read it. And our actions and comments on this have to do, nearly tied to this one item. Discussion and possible action on a resolution addressing recent statements from Councilmember Corio regarding collaboration on the city council, a call for increased civil discourse, and directing staff to draft a code of conduct for the city's future considerations requested by the city council. And we have, I'm going to turn to Councilmember Mboka Milawonbue, who submitted this. He has five minutes, and we have about a 10-minute council discussion, which would, you know, put us right up against the 6 o'clock regular meeting. Mboka?
Sorry, muted. Thank you, Mayor. I know the time is of the essence, so I thought, rather than going on at length in terms of comments, I would just read the resolution, particularly given the fact that I've spoken to this.
And what do you mean by the resolution, for the record?
The resolution that we have that we're considering.
Would you read that?
So, yes, that's what I'm going to do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's what I said I'm going to do. Okay, so I'm just going to get it, go ahead and read it, and then, so that everybody knows what we're considering, and then after that, I'll make a motion. So, a resolution setting forth the high value of the city council, the high value the city council places on civil discourse, expressing the superfluous Councilmember Jen Corio's recent comments, and calling on the creation of a code of conduct. Whereas the city council is made up of individuals with different backgrounds and experiences, and encourages differing opinions and the civil debate of issues involving the city, and whereas it is a core value and expectation of the city council that its members treat each other with respect along with other members of the community, and that its members engage in civil discourse, and whereas the elected leaders of the city must set the example and tone for demonstrating respect and fostering a civil discourse on the issues facing the city, and whereas a key to civil discourse is avoiding hostility and direct antagonism, and instead showing appreciation for the experiences and opinions of others. And whereas on April 5, 2021, Councilmember Jen Corio posted comments on Facebook wherein she identified herself as a Bloomington city council member for Ward 6, and wherein she stated that she looks forward to making the lives of two newly elected city council members a, quote, "living hell" for the next two years, end quote, and calling them both, quote, "dangerous authoritarian." quote, "dangerous authoritarians brought out by the police unions," end quote. And whereas the city council finds that posted comments do not foster civil discourse and rather hinders an environment where the council can work together to meet the challenges of the community, and whereas by this resolution, the city council desires to address councilmember Carrillo's comments, reinforce its commitment to civil public discourse, and direct staff to draft a code of conduct for the future consideration of the city council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Bloomington, the Plain County Illinois as follows. Section One, the above stated recitals are incorporated herein by reference. Section Two, the city council of the city of Bloomington hereby reaffirms its commitment to treating others with respect and the importance of fostering the civil public discourse of issues impacting the city. The city council further calls on councilmember Carrillo to be mindful of language that hinders the ability of the city council to work together for the benefit of all residents of the community. And Section Three, the city council directs staff to work on and draft the code of conduct for the elected officials to consider, debate, and vote on at a future city council meeting, but no later than July 31st of 2021. And Section Four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately after its passage and approval, approved by the city council of the city of Bloomington, the Plain County, Bloomington, Illinois, for nineteen twenty-one. Of course, that depending on how the vote goes.
Okay, so you're making, are you moving that as a, are you making that as a motion?
Yes, I am making now a motion that we do approve this resolution.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Councilmember Milowambwe, second by Councilmember Bray. At this point, in terms of discussion, I think it's only fair that we turn to Councilmember Carrillo for her response. Jen, go ahead. You have a few minutes.
Thank you. So I want to start my comments by re-centering what I think is most important here, so I'd like to ask that we please just hold a quick moment of silence to honor Adam Toledo, a thirteen-year-old boy who was murdered by a Chicago police officer on March 29th, to honor Dante Wright, a loving father who was shot at close range and killed by a police officer in Minnesota last week, and to call in the room all those names and faces that we will never know, but whose lives have been stolen or destroyed by police, ICE, prisons, or other agents of the carceral state. Thank you. Though many, including some on this council, like to delude themselves into thinking that a tragic incident like that can't happen here, all of us who understand the insidious nature of racism know that they are missing the forest for the trees, because while we have not had a high-profile use-of-force incident for that, we do have data to demonstrate that racism is alive and well in our community and in our police department, regardless and even in spite of people's best intentions. And to suggest, and this, what we know suggests that black lives don't matter as much as white lives in our community. We know that black people in Bloomington are disproportionately more likely to be stopped and frisked as pedestrians, to be pulled over, to be surged, to be canine-sniffed, to be tased, to be pepper sprayed, to be beaten by police, to be threatened with a police dog, to be arrested, to be incarcerated. They are more likely to be forced to serve longer jail times and receive harsher sentences than their white counterparts.
Jen, I don't disagree with, I totally agree, but yeah, just.
Yes, this is relevant. Yes, I'm getting to the point. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This should lead anybody with a moral compass to the conclusion that the status quo is absolutely intolerable, and that every day that we allow it to persist, we are choosing to be complicit in the most inhumane and vicious system that human beings have ever devised. So now I want to get to the comments in this context. So in spite of being privy to the same abhorrent facts that I just shared, Nick Becker and Sheila Montney centered their campaigns on the need for unquestioning compliance towards police's authority figures, and yes, that's called authoritarianism. They propose that we should not only maintain the status quo, but expand upon it by continuing to increase the budget.
Point of order.
I don't think there's, she's getting to the point. I think, I don't think there's a point of order right here. I think she's pointing out, she's talking about the background of her remarks toward these two people. Jen?
So they propose that we not only maintain the status quo, but expand upon it by continuing to increase the police department's budget year after year. They've rejected community calls for meaningful police reform. They've lied and fear-mongered their way into office financed by record-breaking donations from the very same police union that represents the officers that they now have to oversee. So do I stand by my comments? Yes, because by advocating for the retrograde and authoritarian and racist policies that they have run on, Becker and Montney have through their actions, even if they have not said as much, effectively promised to make life a living hell for tens of thousands of people in my community, especially black and brown people. So I have no problem with the fact that on election night, I decided to use my public platform to make a recommitment to fight for those folks. And frankly, I think anybody who is more offended by my comments than they are by the racist status quo in our community needs to get their priorities straight. And.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, Jen, so we can move on, but go ahead.
I will wrap it up. As many folks have named during public comment, the vast majority of this body has watched idly by as people abuse the process to silence my voice, as fellow council members interrupt, deliberately say my name wrong, as they attack and discredit people and organizations that I have a relationship with, as people are calling for my deportation, as people question my citizenship status, and have done nothing. So now to have the audacity to have this meeting talking about civility, I think, you know, is, is, it's, it's hard to, is a hard pill to swallow. So my role here is not to be well-liked. My role is to stick up for my constituents, and so I want to continue to do that, and that's what I'm going to do.
Okay, thank you. Other comments on the resolution? Uh, see, Councilmember Emig, and then Crable and Ward, is that right? Okay, Julie, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to be known that I disagree with what my colleague, Councilwoman Carrillo, said in her Facebook post that is the cause for this meeting this evening, nor do I condone disparaging comments that have been directed at Alderwoman Carrillo. Moreover, I do not support a formal censure or the creation of a code of conduct. I think it establishes a worrisome precedent that could be used to limit other speech across this elected body. Rather, I would prefer that we and city staff focus our efforts on the business at hand of working for the residents of Bloomington. We don't and shouldn't have to agree with one another. We should strive towards civil discourse in our disagreements. But once we codify a policy about how to engage with one another, we will only become further entrenched as we debate and accuse one another about what constitutes a breach. Instead of doing this, I would rather spend time reviewing the Connect Transit and Public Works presentations that are on our regular agenda today, community efforts to go green, greater mental health, of course, improved infrastructure, grant procurement, and done violence. We are all exhausted by COVID, and we are finally, fingers crossed, nearing a tipping point. Let's hold each other accountable, yes, but not at the expense of getting the work of the city done. Finally, as a reminder to all residents of Bloomington, your voice is your vote. Ultimately, you decide who serves if you choose to vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Crable, and then Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. So I understand people are upset by the comments made by Alderwoman Carrillo. Other aldermen have already spoken out publicly against those comments. I just don't see the need for this special hearing or a resolution. It feels like a public flogging of a young queer woman of color. You know, I wish we could act this quickly to, for instance, surpass a resolution to protect our residents from utility shut-offs, or that we have a special meeting to speak against violence against Asian Americans or young men of color. I would also note, as many have also mentioned, that Alderwoman Carrillo's ethics and motivations have all, have been attacked by members of this council, and malicious lies and threats have been made against her and her family by the public. None of you have spoken out against this, so this just seems hypocritical. Therefore, I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Ward?
So I've refrained from making a public statement before tonight in an effort to hear rather than be heard, and having done so, it's with sadness that I must vote in favor of the resolution before us. Councilmember Carrillo has characterized herself as representing the views of her Ward Six constituents in her comments of April 6th. I too have a commitment to represent my constituents, and the overwhelming majority of the residents of Ward Seven, who have reached out to me over the past two weeks, have communicated that the comments cannot be shrugged off without a rebuke. To those who would like to characterize this as a free speech issue, or those who raised concerns about comments that have been made toward Councilmember Carrillo by members of the public, I say that there is a fundamental difference between the actions of a private citizen and the actions of an elected public official. As elected council members, we by definition have power that private citizens do not have, but that power is not unlimited. The power to set the agenda of public discourse and to determine public priorities carries with it an obligation to civility, not only for civility's sake, but for the sake of attending to the business of the people. The statements that were made on April 6th have distracted this council from the work that needs to be done, and there is work to be done. Moreover, the statements also have hindered the ability of the incoming council to develop the kinds of civil relationships that are necessary if we hope to make any progress on the many, many issues that we face as a community. I am not suggesting that we should always agree with one another, and I'm certainly not calling for us to make nice, but there is a difference between disputing a person's actions or ideas and making a personal attack. Finally, although I am not so naive as to think that this conversation will be over tonight, I am looking forward to us moving towards some reconciliation, and that will require what Nelson Mandela spoke of when he said that you cannot change someone else unless you first change yourself. It is far past time for us as elected leaders of our community to model a better way. Our community deserves better than this, and we can do better than this.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Councilmember Matthew, and then we will vote on the resolution. Jamie?
Thanks, Mayor. Molly just said quite a few of the things I was going to say, too. I haven't had an issue where this many people have reached out to me in the entire time I've been on council at this point, both good and bad about the comments. So I wanted to share a story. A couple of weeks before the election, I had a conversation with a local developer who had reached out to me. He's been trying to bring a company to Bloomington that builds mixed-income housing developments all over the Midwest. Most people know that we have a housing shortage right now. People may not realize we also have a rental shortage that is starting to drive up rental rates, so we need more rental, specifically, we need affordable rental options for residents. The part of the conversation that's pertinent is that when the develop, you know, I was told the developer, by the developer, that the company had staff that was specifically assigned to watch the social media pages of elected officials in areas they were considering building in, because before they made a multimillion-dollar investment on a new housing development, they wanted to make sure there was stability in the area, and they specifically asked him about Councilmember Carrillo's page before the election even happened. What I'm trying to get to the point here is that I agreed to this meeting specifically to reassure the community that Councilmember Carrillo does not speak for the rest of the council, and that I agree that her comments were unacceptable and inappropriate. I don't think she's ever claimed to speak for the rest of the council, and that's perfectly fine, but there is a time and a place for everything. I also want to let people know that in response to the number one question I've gotten the last two weeks is that no, under Illinois law, there is no way to remove a sitting mayor or city council member. There's nothing we can do about that. It can only be changed by the residents of Bloomington by collecting signatures and having ordinance put to vote via referendum. So the next opportunity for that is in 2022. In the meantime, I've made a commitment that I will continue to listen to all reasonable ideas put forward to me by anybody else on the council, and I will make my opinions and judgments on their ideas and not on the individuals. So I will be supporting the resolution tonight, but I will not support a code of conduct in the future. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilo Lambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
No.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
No.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
No.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Motion carries six to three. There are three names to announce, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Emig, Councilmember Carrillo, and Councilmember Crable.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the special session of the city council. Moved by Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second, second by Councilmember Carrillo? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Aye.
Or waves your hand? I don't see any in opposition. We're adjourned. I'm going to, we're going to reconvene at six oh one, at six oh four, and begin our regular committee of the whole meeting at six oh four. So it's time for a quick bathroom break or whatever. Thanks. Got a full screen here. I'm sorry? I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I know, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the committee of the whole to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor, do we, sorry, nope, you're right. Councilmember Matthew.
Here.
Councilmember Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Milla Wambwe.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor, running.
Here. Thank you very much. At this point, do we have public comment on the committee of the whole?
We do. We've got three live here at City Hall. First up, we can have Alan Axelrod.
Alan?
Oh, I guess I'll just sit down.
Go ahead, Alan.
All right. Good evening. My name is Alan Max Axelrod. I'm the campaign lead of No Ameren Shut-Offs. That's a zero-dollar, all-vonunteer grassroots coalition of 51 member organizations and counting spanning the state of Illinois, north and south, east and west. I shouldn't even be speaking to you today. It's the fault of several state government officials that I even have to, not yours. Back in November, when we last spoke, you all passed unanimously an initiative on utility shut-offs because of the threat that it posed to our residents. And it still does, and it is back. Last week, Ameren, Illinois resumed utility shut-offs. We saw the same pattern in West Virginia, in Indiana, in Tennessee, that anytime utility shut-offs had resumed due to the cessation of a moratorium during this pandemic, two weeks later, the coronavirus caseloads exploded. In Illinois, when that happened, two weeks after utility shut-offs, we had over 2,000 cases a day. Three weeks after utility shut-offs, it was over 3,000 cases a day. Four weeks after utility shut-offs, it was over 4,000 cases a day. A month and five days later, it was over 6,000 cases a day, all before Halloween and all before the election. It's happening again. Not in Illinois yet, because we still have another week to go, but in Pennsylvania and Michigan. Michigan, which isn't even a top-six-population state, is number one in new coronavirus cases. The state of Illinois, due to new B.117 strain of coronavirus, is neck and neck with Texas. This is a severe and immediate issue. Back in January, there was a bill called SB 3066. It was pocket-vetoed by one Democratic state senator, Laura M. Murphy. That bill would have allowed Illinoisans to catch up on their rent and utility debt using federal dollars, no impact to the state legislature, to the state budget at all. That bill has since been reincarnated as HB 3877, or 2877. It has passed the House, and it has 11 state senator sponsors. It was passed bipartisanly through the House. The money is originally appropriated from the Trump administration. The initiative before you tonight is on invoicing your support for that legislation, which would appropriate federal funds to rent and utility providers, as landlords, property managers, and utility providers, who need those funds earmarked by households to catch people up on their debt so that they aren't dehoused en masse like they were last time. Please vote in favor of the initiative. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you. Next, Madam Clerk.
Next up, we have Matthew Tosco.
Mr. Tosco?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you have, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Matt. I'm a member of the local DSA, CPUSA, and tenant union. I apologize that I couldn't make the special session earlier. My comments mostly pertain to that. But seeing how it all played out, and the mockery of local government, y'all made it, everything I have to say is equally pertinent now as it was then. I really think this is a new low for this council. The six of you clown shoes wannabe authoritarians would waste this body's time to rebuke Alder Person Correa for comments made regarding the outcomes of the local elections earlier this month. I hope and would expect Alder Person Correa to make the public lives of each candidate who was bought and paid for by the police association hell, while they spend their terms attempting wild gymnastics to lick those cop boots from that deep in those cop pockets. The idea of creating a code of conduct or crap like that is nothing more than a transparent attempt to tone police discontent, soften the blowback from those outside or bourgeois interests, keep yourselves as comfy and insulated as possible from those you fully intend to tread upon, and ultimately limit older people's ability to do their jobs for those they represent. Appeals for civility or decorum in Democratic public arenas are a classic tool of oppressors. And looking at who's signed onto this affront says a lot about them. Who the hell do any of the six of you think you are, trying to further gentrify public arenas anyway? Four of you, Donna, Joni, Kim, and Mboka, showed us masks off exactly who the hell they are when they voted to allow water shut-offs despite the ongoing pandemic taboo. This is seriously some cartoon villain-level pandering to a tiny group of moneyed investors whining that their investments involve risk, all at very real, very dire expense of our community's most vulnerable. Your public lives should be made hell, this kind of betrayal alone. This, coupled with your desire to rebuke Jen and further gentrify Democratic public arenas with a contemptible code of conduct, make it very clear that your interests on the council aren't unity or a Bloomington that works for everyone here. You are there to deepen existing divides by championing capital-class interests alone in support of the deliberately exclusionary status quo in an all-out legislative class war. Thank goodness, there are good, there are so many good people in this city who won't stand down to fascist, adjacent tools, won't be silenced by your manipulation of oppressive structures, good people who will fight back and give you hell every step of the way. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, Madam Clerk.
Next up live, we have Trevin Gaffney.
Mr. Gaffney?
Hello.
Yep, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was coming to speak on Councilmember Crable's initiative to encourage, you know, Bloomington adding its name to the other communities that have decided to do what they can in instances like this in a pandemic. Alan detailed it beautifully. It's really something small to ask from us here on the, on the council, those privileged people that can use their position of power to be able to do something for a lot of people that are going to. I work at the Salvation Army. I see these people that are affected by this, by some, some of the things of this pandemic. Of course, many of them have their own personal, but the pandemic obviously exacerbated many of these issues. I see it. You can't tell me it's not real, and it's something very small that you can do to be able to help those people. And I really wasn't gonna say anything, but as, as a person who thinks it's very funny that, that this council has such a hard time or doesn't want to take the time to really know and, and, and learn how to pronounce somebody's name, Mboka Mwilambwe was just elected your mayor, and you still refuse to know. So all of this theater about feeling like threatened by, and, and she's terrorizing you, you don't deal with what a lot of people in your own community deal with. Please, like, see past yourself. And again, instead of passing something like six of you just did, something that's going to be completely useless to try to silence someone, you could be using your, your privilege to do something better. Please, please do better, and I definitely thank you for your time. I'll be seeing you a lot more.
Nope, we, we still have a few others. Scott, nope, we have Scott Steinling live.
Scott Steinling, Ward Five. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, Scott Steinling, Ward Five. I am extremely disappointed in the infrastructure in this town. The sidewalks are pathetic. There was a neighbor that was out walking on the sidewalk. They tried, they were terrible. And they were, tried the streets, and they were worse. Now, when, when are these going to be addressed? I mean, you could, let's say, break their neck first. And I'm embarrassed of the, then the storm drains are sunk down so low that when there's a runoff, the water can't get away that fast, and it floods the roads. But I forgot, Terry, you're not in that area, are you? And you really could care less, it appears. But yet, the, the city keeps tax, 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 spend, spend, spend. They will never have enough to please some people. And I, I really feel that the people deserve better. And the, as far as some of the ordinances in this town, I can't believe it, that they're that, people are looking at Bloomington, and they're laughing, thinking, you know, the boy, I wouldn't want to live there. This city is not getting a good name. That's pretty much all I gotta say. Thank you.
Okay, next, Madam Clerk. Next?
I'm coming. Next up, we have Kimberly Tyson. Kimberly, you'll press star six to unmute yourself.
We can't hear you, Ms. Tyson. Ms. Tyson? We're gonna have to move on if you, if you, we can't get to you.
Mayor, we could jump to Kelly Tyson.
Okay, Kelly.
If Kelly's available.
Okay.
Be star six to unmute yourself.
Kelly, can you unmute? There you go. We, we, you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Kelly Tyce. Tyson, I would like to finish up my comment from the special meeting, just to expound upon my frustration that the meeting was taking place at all. The city council meetings are public, and I've watched several online. And from council members other than Councilmember Correa, I've witnessed some very childish passive aggression, unwillingness or stubbornness to discuss or explore issues, exaggerated nitpickiness, or choosing to be difficult to work with on issues that they're not interested in or don't support, even if the rest of the council has no issue with it and is simply just wanting to discuss it further. So it seems to me that someone can be passive-aggressive, obstruct city council discourse and processes, be casually racist or outwardly racist, but you won't bat an eye about it as long as they say please and thank you. Or is it deeper, like the xenophobia and racism we've heard tonight already? Again, this is absurd. Let our elected leaders speak, and we have larger community goals to look to. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Crable for his contribution to the meeting tonight. And I'd also like to address Councilmember Ward. I was disappointed in your vote. I was really looking forward to you, looking forward to your leadership, and I'm hoping that going forward, you see this issue here today in a deeper or new light, and that your voice will be one for progress in the community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Madam Clerk.
Next up, Kimberly Tyson, are you there?
Kimberly, are you there? We need you to press star six.
Can we try it that time? Did it work that time?
There we go. We can hear you.
Okay. Basically, a lot of the same from before. I'm very disappointed in the way that that vote went. It's pathetic, if you ask me. I think it's absolutely dangerous as well to establish a code of conduct, especially one that would apply to folks' social media outside of official meetings. It just doesn't make sense. Specifically, the last thing I want to say and want all of my representatives to hear is that centrists are absolutely obstructionist, and there's no way we're going to get anything done if you continue to vote no and just stand back from making the hard decisions and standing up for the actual right things that will help the people of this town. I'm disappointed.
Okay, is that it? Is she still on?
She is muted.
Okay.
So we can move on.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on, and we have a first presentation by Connect Transit.
Sorry, Mayor, we still have a few more for public comment.
Oh, I thought that was it.
Yeah, sorry, I meant move on to public, with public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Next up, we have Zach Carlson.
Hey there, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. So none of the frivolous business out of the way. By the way, disappointed, especially you, Jamie and Molly. I'd do better. I'd like to bring up something that was presented to council last week, the water moratorium and these landlords that spoke before. I want to first thank those who voted yes on continuing the local water moratorium. So, that's you, Jamie and Molly. Thank you. And both the other three, thank you again. And I'm unsurprised by those who voted no. You know who you are. I can't wait to see you gone. But it was reported by WGLT that homes like to see a change in city ordinance and to recall the moratorium. Despite their own fake, you know, made-up statistics, 90% of tenants have been proactive and good, or their definition is, during the pandemic. These people would rather put the vast majority of people at risk rather than helping people, and with amounts to likely less than 1% of the entire Bloomington population or even Bloomington renters. I urge the council to pay no attention to these landlords and their supposed plight. They claim they provide a service to the people of Bloomington, but instead leech off the workers' hard, workers' hard-earned money, leaving the audacity to, they're entitled to rents because they put in the risk. The risk of owning investment property is that you can lose money. That's the life, and that's life. We should not bail these landlords for poor, for poor financial planning or simple greed, which is far more likely. Illinois already has more than enough protections available to these people, including an entire ban on rent control. And these landlords can easily raise the price on their apartments from $600 to $1200 with no rhyme or reason, and I've seen it happen. People will pay that because you cannot put a price on your own personal safety and security. Homelessness is not an option. We should not be encouraging that by giving these people what they want. It's clear that we're anything around this, and you'll hear more from them. Do not fall for their lies or sob stories. Stick with the hard-working people that make Bloomington work, that make Bloomington thrive, that make our city a city, and not those who suck every penny possible from its citizens. Earlier, you heard from Alan Axelrod, who's been an amazing organizer, who I've worked with for a long time. Support Jeff's proposal. Support that bill, make it happen. That can relieve the tensions for many people across Bloomington. So please vote yes on that. Thank you for your time, and that's all.
Thank you very much. We next move on to, actually, COVID update by our city manager, Mr. Gleason.
Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, we still have somebody else?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought there were three, four people ago.
You're okay. So we have Tate Skinner.
We still have somebody else? Is that the last one?
Yes, that is.
Okay, now, now we're okay.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. I'm, I'm Tate. Mbaka has already shown complete failure in governance with his first action being offended over some words instead of actually doing something to help the people of Bloomington. He didn't seem concerned when board members said racist shit, which we all know has happened. So why does he seem to care now? Because he's an authoritarian that would rather censor and control public officials than actually work with his colleagues to help the town. He would rather make up fake decorum rules and pretend her language was too mean for the public. This is a pathetic excuse to censor Jen and control her. There's nothing wrong with strong language, and honestly, if you were that offended over language, that's just sad. Also, as a representative of the local tenants' union, there are more issues in this community than language. We are at a crisis in America with evictions, and people are fucking dying. But this is what you're concerned about? Why don't you give a fuck about the people in this community? Jen, as she fucking should, said exactly as she meant.
If, if you use, if you use, that's the one thing we've not allowed. You can't use.
I did not know that that was not allowed.
It's not, and we will, I will have to mute you. Continue.
Jen, as she should, said exactly as she meant. As a member of this community, I appreciate her comments, and I expect nothing less than her type of honesty from public officials. Because while you might not agree... Because while you might not agree, she didn't lie about where she stands. And to anyone supporting censorship, we will make your life a living hell. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. At this point, uh, we, uh, are done at this point. Okay. Was there anybody we needed to uh mention who emailed on this?
No, there were no email comments for the regular meeting.
Now, at this point, I will turn to Mr. Gleason for a COVID update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a couple of quick comments regarding uh COVID. Uh, at the arena for vaccination, we've actually vaccinated over 33,000 uh in the region, in the county. Uh, and that would be a mix of Moderna, Pfizer and Johnson and Johnson, although Johnson and Johnson has been suspended for uh indefinite future. And then we're scheduled Tuesday through Friday this week, a little bit more than 5,000 doses for the residents of the community. So wanted to share that. And then also, I just wanted to share appreciation from myself and staff to uh downtown business owners, uh to the students uh that were out for a pub crawl this weekend and to the Bloomington Police Department. We get a call early afternoon on Saturday that uh there was a number of people without masks uh doing the pub crawl that uh we knew was uh coming to our downtown. And um turned this thing, I think, into a positive uh when it could have been one of enforcement. And that was really not the pathway to go. A couple of officers uh went down with disposable masks and uh, you know, handed them out instead uh to the students that were trying to have a good time. Received a fair amount of appreciation from the students themselves and from the business owners. So wanted to share that uh, you know, took something that was a positive and kept it a positive at the same time maintaining uh, you know, the, the, the very real concern that we have in this community in this region for the positivity numbers that we're seeing. So just wanted to share that. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Sure, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Gleason. And I wonder if you could share with the uh, those registering for the Health Department. It's, they might want to work on making it a little more accessible. Uh, I'm not very tech savvy, but I went on five times and tried to figure out how to, to uh, to register it. Maybe, there may be some other reasons, but uh, then we want to try to make it as, try to make it as user friendly as possible. But I'm glad we're, we're making progress there. Thank you so much. At this point, I'm going to uh turn it over to Mr. Gleason, who's going to introduce, make some preparatory comments about the Connect Transit budget and then ultimately we're gonna have Mr. Ryan Whitehouse, uh, who's the Connect Transit Board Chair. Give us an update. Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm actually going to uh kick it to uh the Deputy City Manager, Billy Tyus. He's the representative uh for Connect Transit.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Manny. Um, as the manager said, and at his direction, I've served at this, as the city's uh Connect Transit Board Representative since the fall of 2020, I believe. Uh, similar to the city of Bloomington, Connect has been also been formulating its annual budget for the coming year. Um, as you recall, the budget was presented to you as part of your three and ones back in, I believe, January, February. And the budget was actually presented to the board last month, the plans for formal consideration later this month. Um, as part of that process and an effort to be more transparent with this process, you requested that Connect Transit actually publicly present a summary of its proposed budget during a regular meeting. So that is what is happening tonight. Uh, on the line, I believe we have Connect Transit Board Chairman Ryan Whitehouse, as the mayor said. Uh, we also have interim GM Mark Peterson and Finance Director Pat Kubrick. So uh with that, I'll turn things over to them. Thanks.
Ryan, can you hear us?
Sure can. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead. Go for it.
Uh, well, thank you very much. I, I won't take much time because we have gone over this. But I do think as uh Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus said, we are happy to share our numbers and our figures and with the public and with you and let the public know what we're doing. We're very proud of what we're accomplishing at Connect Transit. We, even during this tough time of COVID, uh, we were able to provide safe service and, and keep a budget and, 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 and make sure that we had all of our employees there and, and have kept their jobs. So with that, um, I, can I turn, can I have share a screen just by sharing a screen, Leslie? Or do I have to do something? Not a tech guy, if you can't tell.
Nope, you're fine. You just click share screen and should be able to select.
Okay, can you see, can you all see that?
Yep, we're, we're good, Ryan.
Okay, so um, as you can see here, uh, just our budget overview. And I think um, for the public, we have an operating budget. Um, our fiscal year 2022, which will start this June, our operating budget is a $15 million operating budget. Of that budgeted revenue, 65% of that comes from the Illinois Department of Transportation or about $9.6 million. Another 18% or $2.7 million comes from the federal government through US uh Department of Transportation and FTA through a formula. We do get operating revenues through our fairs, through our advertisements um and our universal agreements that we have with universities and some private businesses in the community. And that equates to about 8% of our budget or about $1.24 million of that. And as you all know, uh, the, we are not a taxing authority. So both Bloomington and Normal contribute money to our operating and our capital budget. But we're going to talk about operating revenue here and I'll talk about capital later. But the city of Bloomington does a very nice uh donation each year. About 5.5% of our budget or $840,000 a year comes from the city of Bloomington to help us keep the buses rolling. Town of Normal uh gives us about $542,000 uh or about 3.5% um of the budgets. As you can see here on the operating expenses, want to touch on this. Labor is our most expensive uh um cost. Uh, I think that's pretty understood across the board, but between labor and employee benefits, uh, it's a large chunk of it. We are very proud that we can pay our employees to what we do and provide the benefits that we do. And um, but we have, but it takes quite a bit of money to do that. There's other things, larger numbers that you can see on that, fuels, the insurance, professional fees, mun- utilities and miscellaneous. But overall, we're budgeting uh about $15 million in the operating expenses. Um, again, I want to go into more detail what the city of Bloomington is contributing to us and the partnership that we have. And as a Bloomitonian, I sure appreciate, and I know Connect Transit Board and Connect Transit staff and employees um are extremely, and then citizens are happy that you guys step up to the plate and help us. So uh, the full total fiscal year 2022 city of Bloomington contribution totally is gonna be, we're asking for $1,451,681. Of that, $611,681 is capital contributions uh and um 840 is operating. Uh, I think it's probably self explanatory, but just in case the public is not aware, operating is helps us move the buses and, 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 and get the buses from point A and point B on your streets and in your community. The capital contribution, we use the capital contributions from both Bloomington and the town of Normal to match uh state and federal funds, which receives more funds back from uh Department of Transportation uh and Illinois Department of Transportation. So those capital funds really help us grow the pot to, to provide more um upgrades and shelters in our community. Um, you can see the three-year revenue and expenses of um Connect Transit. And I know, I believe the council has been shared with, has, has, has this and, and um, so we can make this public as well. I'll just jump to the bottom there. In fiscal year 2020, our total expense is about $13 million. Our fiscal year 2021, this year, at the end, uh, at the end of June, will be $13,600. And we are projecting $15 million and, and I think there's a few reasons there. You can see expenses, labor will go up. As you know, we are, we are working without um a general manager right now. Mr. Peterson has stepped in, but it's not a full-time job. We also don't have a number two. We don't have an HR professional. We are contracting those roles out, but there's, there's a lot of cost savings that we um saw in 2021 that we see going up, plus our salaries of our employees will go up. Uh, and benefits will go up. Um, as you probably are aware, as a council, benefits um and health insurance seem to go up every year. And so we have to um, uh, budget for those expenses as well. Again, uh, you all know this, but uh, I, I can't talk enough about this because I'm really excited about it. And I think um, as a community, we should be. Uh, our capital projects in fiscal year 2022 are the downtown Bloomington Transfer Center. $18 million total project, project utilizing only state and federal grants. We are going to build this project using state and federal monies that came back to the taxpayers of the city of Bloomington. Um, and we couldn't be happier to do that. The better bus stop campaigns for Bloomington Normal is, a lot of you are aware, the ADA and disabilities, uh, we take very seriously and we work closely with Billy and Tim and staff to get curb cuts and all that stuff. By 2024, we plan to have all of our current bus stops 100% ADA compliant, compliant. Uh, and in fiscal year 2022, we are scheduled to complete 100. Why we can't do more, just so the public knows, it takes time. Even though a small bus stop, there are lots of rules and studies that we have to do with the federal government and state government. That takes a little bit of time. And then also the architecture and engineering and then finding the individuals in the workforce to build these. Of course, we contract that out. So we are moving as fast as possible on that. The electric buses, we're excited about that as well. Four buses will be delivered in fiscal year 2022 um that are fully electric. Uh, those are also funded entirely from state and federal grants. Again, state and federal money coming back to the taxpayers of the city uh of Bloomington. And we have additional 13 buses to be added over the next 40 years. This is really um a path that um FTA and Department of Transportation are, are going. And we are, we are, we are supportive of this and we are, we are gonna um, um, support that, that movement. So with that, um, I am happy um to answer any questions. Um, I, as, as the mayor and Billy had said, Mark Peterson and Pat Kubrick are on. Um, I'm happy to take policy questions and some of the questions that I can't answer. And if I can't answer, then um I will turn to staff to help me do that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, um, I turn it to you.
There we go. Sorry about that. Uh, I have, uh, we have 10 minutes for questions, uh, starting at 6:36. And so I'm going to start with uh, council, let's see, who did I have? I had Councilmember Bowlin, Crable and Emig. Uh, Donna?
Uh, yeah, Ryan, I want to thank you for the um executive summary that came along with this. I think I had asked for that and it's very beneficial to give the overview. But I do have, I go down the side, the side, the far right column to see where there's percent increase, percent decrease. And could you speak to the um 20, 29% increase from federal support? Has that, is that to do with, what does that have to do with?
I'm gonna take a stab at this and Mark, if I, if I murder this, uh, tell me. That, that's a for, a, a funding formula that FTA and DOT has, uh, numbers come up, um, a part of that. But Mark, I'll, I'll turn it to you to make sure.
Yeah, the, the increase is primarily due to, to the use of CARES money. Uh, the system received a substantial CARES grant. We're using that to cover revenue shortfalls from things like the, the, the fare free policy, which has existed for over a year now. Uh, the board is tentatively uh planning to reinstitute fares uh the 1st of June. I think that somewhat depends upon what's going on with the, the pandemic at that point, but that's sort of the plan. But that's why the extra money is due to drawing down CARES funding.
Okay, thank you. And then um, you explained how the contribution from the city affects dope money and, and all. And I noticed that um, there is a significant increase. And is that because of the 5% increase donated by the city plus the $150,000 that we are now going to be contributing annually?
I, I believe so, Mr. Peterson.
Yes, yeah, that's correct. That's the, the additional contribution that, that the city and the town agreed to. And that helps leverage additional
Okay.
uh, operating subsidies from the state and the federal government.
Okay, great.
And just for clarification, right, m- m- Mr. Peterson, right, that was Donna and just for the public, that, that was a recommendation from the working group, correct, Mark?
Correct.
And that, and that allowed for us to go to, even though it hasn't happened yet, the universal, uh, the one rate for all uh, as well as expanding service level for, for connect mobility.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to ask was about the um, the solar panels and the charging stations. I didn't, it might be in the budget here somewhere, but how much money are we investing in that?
Uh, the sol- the solar panels are 100% from the federal government. So that's being covered by a federal grant.
Okay.
Um, and so uh, no local dollars are going to that, correct, Mr. Peterson?
We, yeah, there, I think there's a, there's a small amount of local contribution there, Ryan, not a large amount. The reason we didn't list that is because that project is scheduled to be completed in the current fiscal year. So by July 1, we expect to have that completed. It will provide uh all of the electricity that we use at the connect mobility or the Connect uh Transit Office on Wiley Drive. Uh, it will not necessarily provide all of the electricity needed for the bus charging stations. However, we have an agreement with Corn Belt Energy. We get a very special rate since we will be using that for electric vehicles. So it's a very, very low rate, very competitive rate. But certainly you'll notice in FY22, our utility costs are going down because we don't expect to have any electricity costs for actually operating the, for the electricity needs of the buildings here on our campus at, on Wiley Drive.
Okay, that, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Next, Councilmember Crable and then Emig. Jeff?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And uh, Ryan, thanks for the great presentation. Uh, Mark, thanks for continuing to fill in till there's a, a, a permanent uh, uh, executive director. Uh, and just uh, thank you to all, all the staff that's done great work during the, during the pandemic. You're welcome. Um, so the questions I have, uh, with regard to the electric buses, do you expect that to reduce significantly fuel costs and repair costs since there'll be new buses?
Yeah, so um, I'll, I'll take this and then, because I've talked to operations. Yeah, so fuel will go down. Also, uh, there are less components in the electric bus. So there are less parts that have to be replaced. Um, so without going into a lot of detail, yes and yes.
Uh, let me just add to that if I could, Ryan, and that is true. Electric buses are lower maintenance overall, plus they'll be brand new. Unfortunately, uh, we've still got a pretty old fleet. And uh, as it ages, uh, our maintenance costs are going up. We, we have some buses that are, uh, I think 2003 buses. Uh, we actually purchased those some years ago from the city of Champaign. They were cast offs. And we're still using those buses. So those maintenance costs we see going up. But hopefully, as we, as we uh integrate these new electric buses, we'll eventually see maintenance costs overall fall.
Great, thank you, thank you. Uh, my other question would be uh on the ADA compliant bus stops. Uh, how do you decide of the maybe 400 now still left to do, which comes first? And is there any way to like determine, um, you know, at this particular area, there's more people that with disabilities that would, you know, need that ADA bus stop versus maybe uh another stop in a different part of the community?
Yeah, that's a great question, Jeff. So we do, we do have a process in place. We do use the data and humans are data points, right? We do use the data um of when people are checking in and, and scanning their ba- uh passes or paying no how many. We choose routes that are, have a lot of um, um ridership, right? So the, we try to use, try to make the ADA ones, uh, make them more, the, the larger users, uh, more ADA. We also talk to our drivers and our drivers are skilled professionals. And they, they tell staff quite a bit, there are a lot of individuals that are using this bus stop that um, um, are using the ADA facility. So we have that conversation. As a matter of fact, I know tonight before this, there was a GM meeting where GM and, the GM and staff meet with our drivers and they talk about these types of things and other things. So those two things, the data points and then um, you know, the intelligence that we receive from our um, um, drivers, that's kind of what drives us to decide what's the priority and the ranking of how we move forward on that.
Yeah, thank you. And, and just, you know, and you know this, it's just kind of hard because, you know, you don't know how many uh, you know, people would add to the, you know, use a bus stop, right? And in addition to the, what, what currently use it if it was ADA accessible, right? So that's, it's hard to know that, right?
Yeah, it is. And that's uh 100%, um, Mr. Crable. And um, that's why we are excited that by 2024, we will be 100% and will be the only system in Illinois and, and for what we know, the only system in America that'll have 100% ADA compliance.
The other thing I might, I might add, if I could, just, we do coordinate with the city staff pretty closely because there's some of these stops that also require some sidewalk extensions or sidewalk improvements. And so we work closely with staffs. We try to time our work to happen about the same, at the same time. So we're not, we're not putting a new bus stop in or rev- re- revamping a bus stop where it doesn't have any sidewalk access. And, and city staff is really, really good to work with and we communicate regularly and try to make sure we're on the same page. So that also has some uh impact on our schedule.
Yep, that's great to hear. Thank you both.
Thank you. We'll move. Thank you. We'll move on to Councilmember Emig.
Yeah, um, and thanks again for the presentation to both of you. Um, my colleagues have asked most of my questions. So my one question that I'm getting from a lot of constituents now that, that a location has been selected for the new transfer center. Um, I, I really appreciate the process that you took in the last round to get a lot of feedback from the community. And I just wondered what we can expect as um an opportunity to weigh in um in general about what that facility will be when we get, we get to the planning stages.
Uh, great question, Councilmember Emig. Uh, those that know me, um, I am constantly on staff saying move faster. I want this building built. And uh, but we're doing it in a way. So let me give you a brief where we are. Uh, and this is not an excuse, but just the facts. There are lots of hoops we have to jump through. Since this is being paid for by the Department of Transportation in the federal level and the state level, we have to comply with a lot of their stuff. We are in a process right now of um getting some appraisals and all that stuff, and then we'll move forward with acquisitions and stuff like that. I commit to you. I know staff is committed, the board is committed. Uh, Billy, we've talked about this and Mr. Gleason was there to see it as well. The city and the community will have a say in what some of the needs are of that system. We will, I'm not gonna shy from this, we are gonna make sure that we get the needs that the system needs to operate an efficient system first. But we are going to reach out to the public and to our stakeholder groups and the individuals that share comments with us routinely and, and, and listen and hear them and, and try to um, um, you know, to accommodate as much as possible. It's gonna take longer than I like it to take. So um, I'm hoping that in my four years term, next three years, we, we have this done. I think we will have it done, but I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And uh, we are out of time and I, we appreciate your, your help and all you're doing, but.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Uh, I just want to thank, and um, again, from the, from the bottom of my heart, I do want to thank all of you for a partnership in this community and Connect Transit. But I really, the last year I was chairman, I do want to especially thank the individuals that are leaving the council. Mayor Renner, uh, Councilmember Bray and Councilmember Painter, thank you for being um advocates for transit. Thank you for listening and, and trying to get the facts from staff and from the board before you respond to comments. That means a lot to us. It means a lot to me. And I really appreciate your leadership in the community on that and helping us spread the message um about Connect Transit and how successful so we are. So thank you for your service to our community and um best of luck. And please stay in touch with Connect Transit.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And now we're gonna move right along to the uh next item on our regular agenda. And that's item B, presentation of a solid waste program. We've got about a 20-minute presentation, about 20-minute council discussion. And then we will move on to item C, which is a council initiative. Mr. Gleason, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is uh our fourth presentation that we've come to uh council with. And uh Kevin Cothe, the Public Works Director, is going to share uh some of the changes that are going to occur at the Convenience Center, Citizen Convenience Center that has been approved at my level. Uh, but also there are some areas that uh our staff recommendations that would require a code change. We're not going to do that with uh the seated uh council in the last meeting next week. This is a conversation uh that we'll have with the newly seated council and one that will come before them uh in a conversation, uh, in a community conversation uh sometime uh after they're seated May 1st. One thing that I wanted to share, uh, we've thrown a lot of numbers uh out at everyone. And I truly am a numbers person. It's a responsibility of mine as the city manager, whether uh it's the finance directors, uh, different presentations, uh, you know, every month and uh with the fiscal year budgets for any uh director presentation regarding numbers. I want to be very clear that uh when, when the current changes were uh put into effect spring of 2018, it was something like anything this major, uh, you have to reassess. You have to evaluate to make sure that uh this is functioning as uh we thought it would. Uh, we, we quickly learned, uh, so I, I start summer of uh 2018 and it did not take too long for us to see that uh this was costing a fair amount of money uh for the city, a little bit more than what we expected. Uh, that reassessment would have occurred, uh, you know, late winter, early spring last year, except for COVID. Uh, it was an all hands on deck moment and the primary functions of uh Public Works in this case uh truly was a priority. Uh, and even though we're not quite out of COVID yet, I think we see a light at the end of the tunnel, but we're still in the tunnel. This is also one that uh we definitely need to uh address as much as we possibly can absent uh code uh recommendations from staff for council to make. We've thrown out a number of 1.3 million dollars as the deficit. That's a real number. Uh, $300,000 of that is the amount that we are trying to build back our reserves. So if you want to carve that out and look at a true deficit, that true deficit is $1 million uh that we're seeing uh on this solid waste discussion that we're sharing. Now let's break down that $1 million a little bit further. About 320, 330,000 dollars, we believe, is an area that should be funded by the general fund versus the enterprise fund that went into effect uh spring of 2018. So I want to be very clear that this is not a shell game with uh taxpayer dollars, uh, but want to communicate very clearly of that $1 million projected deficit, about 320, 330,000 dollars, we feel it's appropriate that it would be funded by the uh general fund versus the enterprise fund. But that is not a question for council tonight, but it is part of the uh presentation. Something else that I want to uh share is that uh some of the uh changes and some of the savings that we have talked about when we were talking about the air curtain in the past, that was approved, uh, the purchase was approved by council, is uh personnel costs. Those personnel costs are there, but it's the efficiencies that have been a part of this conversation that we think we can redeploy some of the staff to take care of some of these things that uh we feel are going to save us some money and cut into the uh budget deficit that we've talked about. And then also allow us to deploy to different areas uh within Public Works and to do even more in some of the other areas. So I, I've talked a little bit longer than I planned on it, but uh the Public Works Director, Kevin Cothe, is going to uh present uh, uh, presentation number four. So Kevin, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and mute and it's all yours.
And Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, City Manager Gleason and Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you again. And uh, as uh City Manager mentioned, this is our, our fourth in a series here. But uh, you know, we've been laying the groundwork uh to get to this point. And we are uh building on what's been pre- uh presented up till now. And uh, some of this is gonna be, be a little bit of recap to tie it together. But uh, you know, we look forward to sharing this uh information with you and, and uh moving forward with uh recommendations here, so. The uh projected budget shortfall, as Mr. Gleason mentioned, is uh 1.3 million for the next five years. And that includes uh 300,000 uh to uh build up the reserves to where they should be for an enterprise fund. Uh, and then uh, you know, we've worked uh with the FY21 budget uh to make adjustments so that uh, we basically deferred some uh capital, uh, equipment replacements and purchases. And uh, we did kind of the same thing with FY22 so that we would not uh be carrying that true million dollar deficit those years. But you can only do that so long, uh, because you really need to replace the equipment when uh, when it comes due. Uh, and so that's why we're taking a more serious look at uh, you know, really making some adjustments to, to get us back on track. I'm going to go through a number of different areas that we've uh, you know, identified before as uh possible places for uh some changes. And uh, one of those is the Citizens Convenience Center, which is uh just south of the library. And, and that is a facility that currently allows um users of our solid waste system to bring um, you know, bulk or uh brush or uh some even bring recycle, but we don't necessarily encourage that uh, to, to drop that off during uh the regular business hours of that Citizens Convenience Center. Well, those hours, uh, you know, we uh have um, uh, no, no, it's not open on Mondays. It's open on Saturday and it's open later into the evening on Wednesdays. Um, and so we've looked at, you know, uh, as we make, look to make some other adjustments in the uh solid waste. Um, you know, uh pit, curbside pickup and stuff, uh, maybe this is something that could be uh increased just to uh provide that a little bit better uh level of service because it does back up at times. Uh, some of the uh, as, as Mr. Gleason alluded to, um, some of the, the things that uh we can do under his authority, we will. Other things uh are gonna require uh, you know, some changes to city code. And so uh, you know, some of this uh will just, codifying it will make it uh a little bit easier to enforce. But uh, you know, one of the things that we're looking at going forward is uh, you know, we've got some abuse. And so do two allowable, uh, two free allowable vehicles. Uh, basically one bucket per vehicle. That'd be like equivalent to a pickup truck loader or a four-by-eight trailer uh at the Citizen Convenience Center for bulk per month. So that would not change for, you know, like the um drop off of brush or, or grass clippings or whatever that might be. But this would be for bulk. Um, and then uh for a remodeling, uh, require proof that uh a homeowner or, or a city permit has been issued to a homeowner for the remodeling. The idea here is that we don't want to see contractors who have been hired by a homeowner and have a, a contractor permit to do the work, uh disposing of that uh at the Citizen Convenience Center because that's not the intent. Uh, and so that, that's a part of the thinking there. And then uh looking for uh charging for the extra buckets if, if somebody wants to make more than two trips a month. Um, you know, providing that service, but at, at cost. And uh, the, the $50 uh per bucket per month uh is something that uh internally, we've done some uh costing of, of what, what it costs for us to dispose the material and pick it up at the curb uh and that type of thing. And, and we've arrived at that uh $50 is more of a, a cost for service, a cost recovery type of thing. Um, and so as we look at uh the CCC, uh, we see that um, you know, cost-wise, if we could eliminate those uh box trucks, those enclosed trailers that are bringing in a lot of material, uh, we could uh potentially uh see a savings of uh almost 32,000 a year. And then if we were charging uh for the extra uh trips per month, potentially another 5,000. So we're looking at uh, you know, making adjustments could save uh 37,000 a year with the Citizens Convenience Center going forward. And then uh, here's the usage, uh, a, a nice uh bar chart that kind of shows you by, by a day of week and time of day uh what our usage is. And uh, we, we do have a lot of users, as you can see, from just uh through, from March 2020 through April 11th, we had over 32,000 um trips come into the uh Citizen Convenience Center. And uh, just in the last few years, we started tracking this a lot, lot more closely um than we had before. So uh, that's, that's a lot of um people that are using it. And uh, one thing I want to mention is that when we plot out the addresses of those that are using this and look at it, is, is it a certain area of the city or certain demographic or whatever that might be? And no, it, it's truly, uh, we see that it's addresses throughout the city. It's uh being well utilized, not by, you know, eastsiders or westsiders or people in the core of the city. It's, it's being utilized by all users of our solid waste program. There may be some that don't use it all, but you know, like I say, the distribution is pretty, pretty well across the board, across the city. Now, as we look to uh curbside bulk and brush pickup, as uh City Manager alluded to, we're, we're looking to increase our efficiency. What can we do uh to make it more efficient? And, and one of the things that um we're looking to do is, is eliminate the uh spring and fall curbside bulk pickup and, and then implement some rules as far as uh what um, for the brush and limbs that are uh put out. Uh, you know, instead of just uh, you know, getting really long limbs or whatever, to maybe uh have them cut up into eight-foot lengths and that type of thing and neatly stacked where it makes it easier for our uh loaders to pick that up or our knuckle boom to, to pick that up and put that on the truck and that type of thing. Um, and so we're looking to increase those efficiencies that way. And then uh the cost, the cost of the spring and fall bulk pickup. For last year, uh, we had uh the summer uh and, and fall bulk pickup. We were uh looking at using, we used a total additional labor and equipment of 120,000. Uh, and, and what that means is that we actually rented uh some extra equipment, extra loaders. Uh, and we also pulled staff from our Streets and Sewers Division to help to try to get everything picked up in that two-week timeframe because there's just so much material out at that time. And then when we look at the cost to dispose of that material, um, you know, for the summer and the fall, and we compare that to say what that would have been with just a regular uh bi-weekly disposal cost from what we pick up in a normal two-week period for the, for the summer and for the fall. Subtract that out, we could see that uh, you know, it, it's costing us an extra 231,000 potential savings there uh if we were to, to eliminate that. So with the curbside bulk and brush pickup, you know, the uh thought is, uh, could we be uh a little bit different in our scheduling of that and how, how, what, what might that look like to be more efficient? Uh, so one idea is to uh switch from uh every other week uh to, to doing it monthly. So maybe uh an example might be to uh split the city into four quadrants and uh pick up uh, you know, each of the four weeks of a month and uh say quadrant ones on the, the first week of the month. And we would have people set out their uh bulk and brush uh that first day of the week. And then, you know, the, each, each route, each area of Bloomington, depending on the nature of it with the amount of trees and brush and there's different things, uh, we see that there's um, you know, some areas that don't have much out, other areas have a lot. By, by doing more of a weekly, uh, you know, we could continue on uh for a day to uh, you know, if it's a light day, continue on picking up. Uh, if it's a heavy day, it might go, it, carry over to the next day or whatever. But instead of trying to stay on schedule by day, uh, you know, stay on schedule by week. And then for those, for those weeks that are lighter weeks and stuff, it gives us that extra time, uh, you know, to not only operate the burn box, but maybe do some other things uh that need to be done as well. So those are just some ideas for, you know, increasing that uh, you know, efficiency uh of our operations. And uh, you know, obviously, uh, we would have to, you know, want to commit to staying on schedule so that stuff isn't out there for weeks on end. Uh, by the same token, also enforce that people need to put it out when it's supposed to be out and not, not weeks ahead of time or week, you know, right after we go by. And so um there, we recognize there's gonna need to be some enforcement there, but also just some education, uh, should we implement something like that? And as I mentioned before, we, we ran the numbers and uh came up with that, you know, the $25 uh current charge for the uh bulk pickup on the curb, uh, really is not cost recovery. Uh, we really ought to be more in the $50 uh per bucket range. Uh, and, and uh, you know, there's, there's a, a couple sides to that is, one is to, to operate at a cost recovery standpoint on that. But the other is, is that, you know, if, if uh somebody truly needs to get a construction dumpster because they're, you know, cleaning out a house that, you know, um, there's just a, a ton of uh, you know, stuff that needs to be disposed of. Uh, it ought to be uh in, in our thinking, a little bit uh cost-effective for that dumpster because why, why have all that material out on the curb and uh, you know, all that uh extra uh material for us to get rid of? It ought to be, we ought to be uh, you know, similar in cost so that, you know, that when you need a dumpster, you get a dumpster type of thing. Leaf collection, this is another area we've talked about before and, and uh, you know, the, the leaves are something that when, when that season comes, there's uh tons of leaves everywhere across the city. And, you know, even with uh, you know, working uh extra hours and stuff, we just can't be everywhere at one time. And so uh by bagging leaves, uh, it's gonna, you know, improve safety and efficiency and, and reduce uh, you know, issues with uh leaves going down the gutter and clogging inlets and, and uh, you know, all the other things that become problematic when the leaves are sitting there. There's a big wind coming and it blows down the street, blows into neighbors' yards and uh, you know, we hear a lot about it. So uh, you know, let's uh switch to uh biodegradable bags and those uh leaves will stay put. Um, you know, we try to run the same schedule as the, the bulk and brush pickup and uh get the material picked up with our loaders and our, our rear packers and uh try to be more efficient about it. Um, and then of course, we always want to encourage uh our residents to look at composting and mulching as options because uh if you can leave the material in your yard and use it in other ways, why not? And uh, once again, you know, we'd have to enforce that the stuff doesn't get out, put out the wrong time. But uh, you know, we think that we could be much more efficient with that. And that efficiency would look like um, you know, potentially a $230,000 annual savings. Uh, and part of that is not having to replace uh the, the leaf back. Uh, and part of that is not having to replace the, the leaf backs, which are about seventy thousand each. Um, but also just in, in what we do right now is bringing um, people from our streets and sewers division in to help with that leaf collection. And and really when we use those people from streets and sewers to help with the spring and fall bulk pickup, the leaf collection, those, those people are no longer able to work on the things that they need to be working on, whether it's, you know, fixing streets or repairing inlets or, you know, broken sewers, cave ins, all that type of thing. But, you know, we're not getting that other work done. So it, it really helps if we're able to keep, keep those people working where they should be working to keep our, the rest of our infrastructure in, in good, good repair. So. Some additional items, uh, this was mentioned by city manager Gleason, uh, is, you know, one, just a billing audit, that, that's a pretty simple, straightforward thing, uh, just to make sure everybody's being billed appropriately. But then the general fund, as was noted, there's alley maintenance that is done. And, and also how we handle our snow and ice vehicles. And then cleanup abatement from administrative courts. So what this looks like for additional revenues from the cart audit is that, based on our audit we did last year, we found about four thousand of stuff that wasn't being billed right. And so we, we were able to make those fixes by comparing the billing data to our RGIS and addresses. Um, so that's a pretty, pretty easy one, doesn't net a ton of money, but, uh, you know, the, everybody should be billed correctly. Uh, and then when we look at alleys, alley maintenance, now the alley maintenance also besides the gravel and, and, you know, fixing gravel alleys and you know, brush removal in them, this also includes median maintenance. So those paved medians in the city that grow weeds or yet, you know, gravel and other types of debris on them. Uh, our, our guys go out and and clean those up. But those are really not items that the solid waste fund should really be subsidizing. We think it ought to be more general fund because that, that pertains to the whole city, not just the users of the solid waste program. So, uh, we're looking at, you know, that could potentially be two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. And then we look at the snow and ice vehicles. And and what this plays into is our dump trucks, you know, that we buy for the streets and sewers division or uh, the solid waste division to haul the, the brush and bulk. Uh, those vehicles are also outfitted with plows and salt spreaders and stuff. And and we, you know, use the same equipment for, for the snow. But there's also specific vehicles that are bought for snow and ice. And it's just trying to make sure that as we're, you know, operating and buying our vehicles that uh, we're, we're attributing it to the correct fund so that the, the snow and ice pays for what it needs. And we're looking at that, that could potentially be another hundred and twenty thousand. And that's where that three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty thousand uh, number comes from that we think ought to come from the general fund. And then the court abatements, you know, that's around thirteen thousand a year. And and that should be reimbursed from the court proceedings and not borne by the solid waste fund. So, uh, that's kind of a, a quick overview of all these specific items. Um, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again tonight about that. And I'll open it up for questions and discussion.
Great. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that, Kevin, and thank you, Mr. Gleason and your entire staff. At this point, and we appreciate that this is the fourth in a series of presentations to us. But are there any questions of members of the council? I see council member Matthew and then Bowlin. Jamie?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate that. Kevin, thanks for the presentation. Appreciate your thoughtful attention to this. I know that this is not fun. Nobody likes to talk about trash over and over again, but it's unfortunately part of what we got to do, right? So, um, one of the things that was brought to me by a resident uh, since our last presentation was, and and I'm not sure if this is correct or not, but what he told me was that the town of Normal does not allow for town trash removal at apartment buildings of any size. Uh, unless it is an owner occupied part of a duplex. But any apartment building that's for rental as a rental property is treated as a business. And the town does not pick up trash for those locations. Currently, we pick up a new city trash services for any um, apartment building that has four or fewer units in it. Have we looked to see what the financial impact would be if we stopped picking up for either four person buildings or all, all apartment buildings in general? Have we looked at that? Because I know that's where the biggest problems that we're having with clean outs and dumping on the curb is, is those apartment buildings. But, you know, have we got any kind of numbers to look at that to see what kind of impact that actually has for us?
Uh, we, we have not specific to those four or fewer unit apartment buildings. Um, of, of course, you know, some, some rentals are just homes as well. Uh, you know, not really a formal, you know, apartment building, but actually broken into maybe two or three units. But that, that is something we could try to look at. Um, I don't know that we have a, a real good handle on what that looks like, but, but we could take a look at that. I, I, I think that, you know, you, you've got a point on the, you know, material that ends up on the curb between, you know, when the tenants move out and that type of thing. But, you know, with these added charges that hopefully changes the situation where the, the, there will be more desire to get a dumpster instead of just putting it all on the curb.
No, I, I agree with that for sure. The last time, uh, you know, we, we did a bedroom project, we rented one and I think it was like a hundred and twenty five dollars for the week or something like that. So it was, it's pretty reasonably priced. Okay, that's, that was my big question I had there. I, I also just wanted to throw in, you know, that the, the leaf collection in the biodegradable bags. Um, you know, every place I've lived other than Bloomington, that's been mandated that that's just how we do leaves in those places. So I appreciate just being able to rake them to the curb, but I understand that it is not the most efficient process. And I can't tell you how many times a year I have to go out and clean things out of the sewer grate near my, near my, the corner of my property so that it doesn't flood. So, um, you know, PSA for everybody, uh, go clean the sewer grates out by your house, right? So, uh, thanks, Kevin. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Council member Bowlin, Donna?
Yeah, I have two questions. The first one, in the packet, it said for the CCC, you needed an ID form. Is that just your driver's license or do you have to fill out a form?
Yeah, no, uh, we're, we're tracking with the driver's license. And one, one of the things that we ask if, if the person driving the vehicle, if that's not, you know, where they reside, if they're like calling for a, a, you know, next door neighbor or whatever, that they bring a copy of the water bill for that neighbor so that we could see that they're actually a user of our solid waste system.
Okay, okay. And the other thing, could you explain the cost either, either savings or expense when you move workers from one area of a job to another? Because I was, I got a phone call and I was challenged that there's not going to be any cost savings with that burner because you're going to have to hire more people. And I was like, no, that's not my understanding. So could you address that?
Yeah, so our, our, you know, workers in the public service division, whether they're, you know, working streets and sewers or solid waste, they, they get, their, their time is attributed to whatever area they're working in. So, you know, if that day they happen to be doing the snow removal, then, you know, the, the time they put in is attributed to snow removal. But, uh, you know, when we have to bring additional people in from our streets and sewers division, who should be, you know, repairing our streets or, you know, fixing sewers and that type of thing, then they are paid out of the solid waste fund. So when we do these extra things, then there's more expense out of the solid waste fund to pay for the extra people we're bringing over.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate everything. We know that these are important challenges facing our city and that our mayor and council are going to need to deal with this. And hopefully we don't do what we did back from around two thousand and eleven to two thousand and sixteen. It took us a half decade to, we just seem to be addicted to trash talk. Uh, and we went back and forth and finally took us a half decade to finally get the enterprise fund balance. But at this point, I want to thank you and I'm going to move on to our council initiative. And I want to clarify, I'm not going to
Mayor Renner?
Yes.
May I ask a, a quick clarifying question?
Oh, sure.
Mr. Kothi?
I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
It's no, no worries. Um, thank you. Um, so I, I also want to reiterate what Alderman Matthews said, that I've never lived in a community where we didn't bag leaves. Um, so I certainly understand why that, that is a preferred way to go going forward. Um, if you mentioned that um, in terms of the bulk, the, the citizens convenience center will have more hours. And then I believe you said that two parcels would be free per household. I just want to like make sure I, I understand that. And let's say, um, I do a clean out and I know there, after this May, there won't be a bulk, a free bulk waste pickup. Could I still call the city and say, hey, I've done this clean out, will you come and haul away? Whatever it is I've got on the curb and charge me for it? Or, you know, how, how does that balance with the, the limited amount that's allowed to be free?
Right, yeah. No, thank you for, thank you for that. And, and just to clarify too, as you noted, uh, you know, this, uh, what we're talking about here does not affect what's going to happen. May, the first weeks of May with the free spring pickup, that's still occurring this year.
Understood.
Yeah, but, uh, a, a good question. And, and so the idea would be, uh, you know, each, you know, home would be allowed the two, two free trips into the convenience center. Uh, if they want to bring more, they could, but then they would get charged for that. Uh, but they would also get charged on the curb the same amount. So if they, if they wanted to put out a number of items on the curb, we would come and pick it up. But we would be charging each, each bucket load fifty dollars then to, to do that.
Thank you. I understand. I appreciate it.
Great. Again, thank you again, Mr. Kothi and Mr. Gleason, and again, all your staff. So we will move on to the council initiative. And I'm not, as I say, I was about to say, I'm not going to be really draconian down to the second, but we, it's three minutes and three minutes. So, uh, again, this is not an actual vote. What it is, is the presenter will have three minutes to present. And in this case, it's Councilman Crable. And then we have a total of three minutes to weigh in on the three options that are presented there. So that means if you have a couple of comments, uh, literally maybe two sentences and then, you know, cut bait as we go around the, the equivalent of the dais. So there, there's three minutes for totally for eight other people to weigh in. So, uh, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to council member Crable. You have three minutes to present your idea and then we'll go to a kind of the round table.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. This all may seem like deja vu because I had a similar initiative back in November, which you all unanimously, unanimously approve, which I appreciate. Um, I withdrew this because at that point, it got to a point where the utilities were shutting, were stopping shut offs. Now, I'm, I'm proposing it now because utility shut offs has started again. Um, and we're still in a pandemic. Right now, we have, I saw it in the paper today, it said twenty five percent of people in Illinois are fully vaccinated. And I know the CDC says we probably won't reach herd immunity until July. Um, we also have the number of cases increasing, hospitalizations are probably about at the highest rate they've ever been. Um, and we know that there are bottlenecks and people receiving aid. Um, I think passing this resolution will be consistent with what we did last week with water shut offs. Uh, my proposed resolution would find that utility shut offs still constitute a pandemic safety risk and calling on the governor to enact a moratorium on utility disconnections without means testing. In addition, uh, the resolution should provide the shut offs should wait until after the state considers a bill, uh, that's been approved by the House and is in front of the Senate. I believe it has eleven Senate sponsors, uh, but it's Illinois Bill HB two eight seven seven. It's called the COVID nineteen federal emergency rental assistance program act, which would include payments directly to landlords and providers. Um, and then, you know, this, like I said, this is passed the House and it's before the Senate now. Um, the resolution would have, have the city call on the Illinois Senate to pass House Bill two eight seven seven. Uh, just to note, Urbana passed a similar resolution that they're meeting on April twelfth. Um, and, and I guess I'll, I'll just throw this out there before people talk um, and decide that I would like, you know, if we could to discuss if there is a possible way. Uh, I know how the initiative process works and we have a second meeting and then we have a third meeting. But if there's somehow a way to, to put this on the agenda for next week. Um, I know that's unusual, but just to kind of talk that through, um, because I, I do see it as time sensitive. So I will leave it at that.
Thank you very much. And so just to clarify, now before I open up to this, again, it's three minutes for all eight people. The three options would be to put it on a future agenda. And then if that were to, to pass, then, or that had majority council support, then Mr. Gleason and I would, would just determine whether or not it's possible to put it on next Monday's agenda uh, pursuant to the requester. So that put on a future agenda or to have staff do some further analysis before we put it on a future agenda or to deny the request. So those are the three options, put it on a future agenda, staff analysis before putting it on or denial. And at this point, Madam Corcoran, if you could start the call, I'm going to start along the dais. And we're going to, well, what would be the dais, council member Matthew?
Uh, I think it's a good idea. I would say put it on a future agenda.
Okay. Council member, uh, Bowlin?
If, if it's effective, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Council member Malawamwe?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Go forward.
Council member Emi?
Yes, put it on a future agenda, item one.
Council member Painter?
Yes.
Council member Carrillo?
Yes, put it on the future agenda.
Council member Ward?
I put it on a future agenda, agenda as soon as possible.
Okay, and council member Crable?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, council member Bray, excuse me.
Yes, a future agenda as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, I think that was clear. Thank you very much. And we are, we're well under budget. Damn, we're good. Oh, I should say darn, we're good. I, I'm trying to clean up my act a little bit. Um, anyway, thank you all very much. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gleason for some final comments. And then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Only comments tonight. Uh, we do have Public Works crews will be collecting bulk waste and brush from May thirteenth to the fourteenth for the twenty twenty one spring free bulk pickup. Uh, the service is offered at no additional charge for solid waste program users. The free bulk waste pickup is returning to its regularly scheduled time period this year. Everyone recalls last year, we pushed it to July because of COVID. And then also if you're curious where you are, uh, you know, as far as pickup, you can go to citybloom.org backslash solid waste to see the map when they're going to pick up your area. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gleason. We appreciate what, all you're doing and all the staff. Okay. At this point, um, do I have a motion to adjourn? By council member Bowlin, is there a second?
Second?
Okay, yeah. Uh, second by who? I'm sorry, council member Malawamwe?
It's fine. It doesn't matter.
I, I was looking to wait. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I don't want to adjourn. I want to stay.
Okay. You're welcome to Maboka. Talk to us. Let us know how it goes.